Thank you for coming to the school committee tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Very good. Okay, so to get started, anybody want to address the school committee tonight under public comment? No? Seeing none, we'll move on then to our read out from the schools. We only have one tonight? You have the spotlight then.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so on Thursday, January 26th at Plymouth South, there was a tech expo, and this includes programs from both north and south. Seventh and eighth graders were able to attend from both PSMS and PCIS in order to learn about the variety of programs offered at both schools. And then later that night, we had our introduction to high school for eighth graders and their parents. And then also recently, we're proud to announce that Maddie Sessler recently had her Division One College Athletic Recognition Ceremony. She has broken many records for track and field at Plymouth South and will continue her career next year at Columbia. Over the past several weeks, numerous English classrooms have been holding Poetry Out Loud competitions. The overall school competition recently concluded, and we would like to congratulate our winners. In third place was senior Peter Duncan. Second place went to another senior, McKenna Rivera Concanon. And the overall winner moving on to the regional competition was freshman Melina Manick. Congratulations to all involved. The district-wide high school science fair will be conducted tomorrow at Plymouth South High School. Many students have been working very hard on their projects all year and are excited to showcase their work. Also tomorrow is the annual Advanced Placement Breakfast. This ceremony will begin at 8:00 a.m., and students, please remember to wear your AP T-shirts. Once again, the Plymouth Public School community is teaming up with the South Shore Community Action Council in this year's third annual Empty Bowls Project to help fight against hunger in our community. Join us on February 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 in our free ceramic workshops. Come make a bowl or plate. Your creations help to raise much-needed funds to replenish the local food pantries in the area. The annual Skills USA District Dinner will take place on Monday, February 13th at 6:00 p.m. Congratulations to all qualified students. And lastly, the PSHS and PNHS AP Info Night will be held on Thursday, February 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at PNHS. If any students are interested in taking an AP course for the 2017 to 2018 academic year, you're encouraged to come.
Very good. Thank you, Brianna. Old business. I don't, I think the only thing, most of our stuff are long-term going to be kept open, but the last item we can now close, the retreat, since we had the retreat this past weekend. Unless anybody has any other updates or anything, I don't think there's anything that we were waiting, any kind of current update. So that would be old business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to add? No new business? Then reports and proposals from Dr. Miestis.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I have a few items to report on tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on Matamit Elementary. I know earlier this year, we had some damage from a fire suppression sprinkler that displaced some classrooms that took some time to get complete. Things are done and things are back to normal, so just want to reach out to Principal Frane and the Matamit staff and the school community at large for all of their support to get this complete. But it was really handled without a hitch and a great deal of effort from everyone. The kids just responded wonderfully to all the adjustments that were made. I was notified today at my meeting at Town Hall with department heads that on February 15th, I will be presenting to the Finance Committee the information regarding the fields. So I'll be presenting a similar presentation that I provided to the Board of Selectmen on the 15th. That'll be at 7:00 p.m. And shortly after that, we will schedule a meeting to once again present information to the Board of Selectmen with final numbers for the project. We're anticipating that that meeting will be March 6th, which is a Tuesday, okay? Typical Board of Selectmen meeting night. So that's tentative. We'll see how things go. I met with the town manager a regu this morning, and we were able to walk through some dates. So you can pencil the March 6th date in. The 15th is a definite, all right? And the next Voyager magazine will be out in the next couple of weeks, so we'll get you to have that as soon as it comes out, and we'll email a link to you. Just wanted to reiterate the science fair tomorrow. I know some of you may be judging, so that's an important day for our Science Department and for our students that look forward to your participation and your judging of their projects. Tomorrow would be a really important day for everybody. So that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Begley. Back to you.
Very good. Thank you. How many people are going to judge? Anybody going to judge tomorrow? I know Mrs. Burgess.
Actually, I've had a dramatic change in my schedule tomorrow, so I'm now available to judge if they need a judge.
I will pass that on. I think they will take you.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely want you.
Dr. Sorenson, you want me to send you an email in the morning?
Would you please?
Just to let you know if, okay, information?
Please, thank you very much. No problem.
Now, tonight, we have quite a few retirements.
We do.
Mrs. Fray.
We have five retirements tonight. Karen Baker, a moderate special needs teacher from Plymouth South High School. Sylvia Bunnell, an elementary teacher from South Elementary School. Joanne Denatolus, a nurse educator from South Middle School. Mary Humbert, math teacher and department head from Plymouth North High School. And Kenneth Pereira, Technical Studies Electrical Teacher and Department Head from Plymouth South High School.
Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank these individuals for their combined 137 years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement. We haven't had one of those in a little bit, that kind of number.
It's a massive number tonight.
Yeah, a lot of you.
Taking a big hit.
Yeah.
Now, before we go to correspondence, if we don't mind, I see Isabelle's joined us for north. You want to?
So we recently began our cap and gown sales. They will run through February 1st to February 17th, and orders are placed in Ms. Allen's room before or after school for $25, made out to the PNHS SAF. And then we had our first annual Poetry Out Loud competition, which was very successful. It was on a Wednesday, February 1st, and we had many finalists of all grades, but then our winner was Ariana Brumis, who is a junior. So she will be going to regionals in Cape Cod, so we'd like to wish Ariana luck. And then our girls' and boys' winter track team was named the Patriot League Champions recently. And then our math team also finished their season with a meet win. It was placing them first in their division, and they've been undefeated for two straight years, so we'd like to congratulate them for all of their hard work and dedication. And our science fair will be tomorrow, February 7th, at Plymouth South High School. And registration begins at 3:00, and it's open to the public from 7:00 to 7:30. And then winners will continue on to the Regional Science Fair at Bridgewater. And then we have our first after, first-ever Fashionist Forever Fashion Show, which is at Plymouth North High School on February 9th at 7:00, and tickets are $5 at all lunches and $8 at the door, and is run by deck of students. So we're excited to have that. And then winter break begins on Monday, February 20th, and then students return on Monday, February 27th. We had a boys' track sprint medley relay winner of Ray De Silva, Josh Pistana, Ben Andrede, and Nick McKenna. Nick McNamee. And they qualified for nationals this March. And then we have 22 students traveling to Costa Rica for nine days during February break for a service learning trip.
Very good. Thank you. I like your shirt. Federal Furnace, we have our school improvement plan tonight from Federal Furnace. Dr. Miestis, would you like to tee that up?
Yes, tonight, we have Federal Furnace Elementary School, and Principal Camaro is here with her school council to provide information regarding their updated school improvement plan. So welcome to school committee. And we moved along nicely in the agenda, so you didn't have to sit too long.
See that? We did that just for you.
Thank you very much.
But that doesn't mean you can talk a long time.
20 minutes should be plenty. Thank you, Mr. Begley, and thank you, school committee, for having us. I wanted to introduce the members of our school council that were able to be here tonight. So I have three parents with us here. I have Louise Pizzano right next to me, who is our co-chair, and then Amy Tenberg and Andrea Holmes. All three are Federal Furnace parents, and thank you very much to those, I mean, school council members here with us tonight, and also those who were unable to be with us. So as an overview of this plan, I want to let you know that there's not much of a dramatic change from our plans in the past, even though this is a new two-year plan. So this brief presentation will highlight the key focus areas for the 2017-2019 plan, demonstrating how they link to previous plans, and some of the highlights of our efforts towards achieving these goals that are outlined specifically in the plan that I know that you have. So this plan was informed by many sources, including data available publicly on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website, surveys conducted of our staff over the past year, and a parent survey that was conducted in December of 2016. That survey actually was quite successful. When we sat here two years ago presenting our plan, one of our concerns was that we didn't have a lot of participation in the survey, and we over-doubled our parent participation. That being said, we're educators, not scientists or statisticians, so there could have been some duplications because we did provide a paper option as well as an online option, and we were more concerned about getting responses than making sure that they were individual responses. So we're not going to split hairs over a percentage point here or there, but it was quite favorable. All of the results, I think with the exception of one question, had 80% or higher satisfaction rate, as evidenced by answers such as agree or strongly agree. So that's a really important piece to think about looking forward at this, at this plan, that it was informed by parents. At least 40% of the community participated in that survey, so that was, that was really great. So our first goal is about being a safe and supportive school, and if you are at school committee meetings or watch them, you've heard us at Federal Furnace talk a little bit about this. We have been participating in a research study for two years through the American Institute of Research, AIR, and the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, TLPI. So we will talk about this briefly for the benefit of people who may not know that much about it. It's important to remember that being a safe and supportive school is an approach, and it's certainly not a promise concerning everything that ever happens at the school, though we work diligently to reduce incidence of things that are not safe and supportive. So we're in the second year of this research study, so it will be concluding in June, but we are really hopeful that our work in this area, you can go to the next slide, will continue. So that's what our first goal is about. So for many years, our first goal is about being safe and supportive. In the 2015-2017 plan, we talked a lot about positive behavior and expectations for students. And what we actually ended up doing, we wanted to expand our program of positive behavior supports, and we did that through participating in this study. We decided to take a more global look at that and looking at behavior from the perspective of why do students often have negative behaviors? Because they're not feeling safe or supported at school. So participating in this study has really been helpful, and as we transition out of the grant program, we, not the grant program, the research study, we want to continue that work. So we've had a subcommittee of staff working on that. We want to transition that committee to be an advisory, so that major decisions at the school are made looking at the safe and supportive framework that has been outlined for us. So that being said, we can go forward. Thank you very much. Some of the things that we've done already and that we want to improve are looking at not only our classroom times, that's been done in the past. The first year of the plan, the team really worked on opportunities for students to be better regulated in classrooms, and places for students to go when they aren't regulated and are experiencing some behavioral difficulties. And so that was all put in place for the beginning of the 2016-17 school year. And then we noticed that some of our non-structured times, such as recess and bus and lunch, there were still a lot of challenges. So we've started to look at those through our committee, and one of the things we did was revisit our recess and provide many options. So you can see in these pictures, not only are there traditional outdoor options for our students, but there are board games, there's coloring materials, there's building materials. And that really helps our kids to engage in constructive play. A lot of research does show that students need help learning how to play as they're not outdoors alone as much as they were in years past. So it's helpful in providing a safe environment, so students then come back in from recess with less conflicts and are able to transition back into the classroom more productively. So moving on to our second goal is that we definitely want to focus on providing a rigorous curriculum. So in the past, we had two goals. The last plan had two goals that were somewhat similar to this. One was about integrating more technology into classrooms, and one was about diversifying assessment and using targeted instruction for students. So we feel that we made quite a bit of progress, in particular on the technology goal, and Mr. Pizzano's going to talk a little bit about that, but we are going to continue this in a little bit of a different way.
Yeah, it's interesting. As part of this survey, one of the things we asked parents to do was to kind of rank various programs and initiatives, not necessarily like do you like or dislike them, but just, you know, in order of, you know, rank priority order. It's funny, technology in the questions came out as something that parents are very happy with, but it also came out as the one program initiative they want to see more of. So it's one of those things where everything we've done, they're happy with, but we're clearly not done there. So it's one of those where we've made people hungry, and others say, yeah, give us more of it. And so they're, at the same time, satisfied and dissatisfied because they want to see more of it. So what we've seen is now that we have a lot of baseline technology, it's now more of a steady-state operations thing where you just have to continue to evolve it, get more of it, make sure that teachers know how to use it. But by all means, doesn't mean, you know, stop the investment. It means, you know, people are happy with it, they want to see more of it, and we just have to keep, you know, keep evolving it.
Thank you very much. So the second piece of that is our universal design, inclusion, and differentiation. So I believe that Mrs. Tenberg wanted to say a little bit about universal design for learning?
Yeah, universal design for learning is basically, for those of you who aren't familiar, based on neurological science, and the general gist is the idea that kids learn more and retain more when they are presented with material multiple times through multiple avenues using multiple techniques. And not only does it give them the opportunity to really absorb and retain, but it also is very inclusive, and it gives students who might learn in a more non-traditional way or have strengths that maybe weren't really played to using older methods, an opportunity to have that chance to shine, where they might not be a child who really soars on writing an essay, maybe when it comes time to build an engineering project, that's right up their alley. And we got a lot of feedback from teachers as well that suggested that doing those kinds of lessons in their classrooms were the ones that got real positive feedback from the kids, were the ones that carried over into multiple years, where they were saying, hey, remember when we did that? And therefore, they were retaining the information. So what we're hoping to do is continue to support the teachers and inform the parents as well on how we can keep these kinds of lessons being a really regular thing and a more frequent thing in the classroom, so that kids who are hands-on learners, kids who learn really well with music, with art, all those kinds of things, have an opportunity to do so, and that it gets them achieving higher as a result.
Thank you very much. So on this slide, you can see a few of the things that we have done, as integrating universal design was a piece of the last plan as well. There's some great projects up there. There's an archaeological dig simulation down in the right-hand corner. There's something that was recently in the Voyager Express email. The Massachusetts Giant Traveling Map, where the kids are learning their geography by standing on the map and doing all kinds of great activities that are available in that kit on the lower right-hand corner of that slide. There's technology, there's active reading strategies with sticky notes, there's oral presentation. So what we want to do, just like Mrs. Tenberg said, is to continue this and make sure that we're supporting our teachers in implementing strategies such as this. Great transition into our next goal, because it really is about supporting staff, encouraging innovation, and also collaboration. Because being a teacher in the 21st century is not an easy thing, trying to provide a safe and supportive environment, rigorous curriculum, everything is changing. One of the only things that is constant is change. So using a lot of these strategies on the right-hand side, peer observation, collaboration, committees, and highlighting our teachers' success, developing experts are some of the things that we want to do through this plan. So one of the things that we've already started was to develop some really diverse committees in the building of staff. So during our staff meeting time, we've, we found topics of interest to the teachers. They're in the educational literature right now, a lot of hot topics up there between outdoor education, homework, technology, how we use space in schools, parent engagement, community building, physical health and well-being. And we asked teachers which committee they wanted to be on, and we surveyed them, and we were able to put them all on one of their top three of all of those committees, while also really making sure that those committees are diverse, so that they're people cross-grade levels, cross-disciplines, special educators working with regular educators, specialists working with classroom teachers, our therapists are involved. And this work just began late fall, early winter, but people are engaged, they're excited, and they're happy to be contributing to moving these ideas or new ideas in each of these areas forward in the building. So that's really exciting, and we hope to continue that. And our final goal, I told you we wouldn't take too long, is about expanding family and community partnerships. So I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Holmes to say a little bit about that.
Hi. So for me, this goal was pretty important, to want families to feel welcome in the school. And when I read the survey and all the results, I mean, the percentage was very high of people that were satisfied with the communication that they're receiving from the school. So of course, you want to build upon that. So I just wanted to read that, that it actually increased 81% of the survey respondents agreed or strongly agreed that Federal Furnace forms effective partnerships with families and community. Fewer than 5% of the respondents disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement. So at this point, we don't really need to improve communication. We want to obviously keep it up, but we want to use the communication relationships that we have and build upon them. So one piece to that is that we obviously would love more families and parents to volunteer, you know, as they can. One of the things that the survey said when looking at the results was, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how I can help at the school or, you know, where I might fit in. So providing opportunities for more families and parents to volunteer is important. And then obviously, to do that, you know, you want to diversify. So some parents obviously, you know, may not be comfortable in the classroom doing support that way, but maybe they're, you know, good at yoga, and they can offer an extracurricular yoga activity for the students, or maybe, you know, they're great at technology and they can help with the newsletter and do things in that way. So I think that, you know, just trying to strengthen the community partnerships with families is very important. It's only going to enhance the school as a whole, you know, help the students and keep them, you know, at school, wanting to come for activities, and, you know, the parents wanting to come in, see what's going on, and support that. And then I don't know if you want to take over first?
Thank you very much. So yeah, just a couple more words on that. Our previous plan had a goal about using our outdoor spaces effectively for education, and that really would not have been possible without community and family partnerships. So here we see some pictures resulting from those partnerships. We have our partnership with Terra Cura, and we do have community gardens beginning to grow. On the right, we have our students who were working with professionals from the South Shore Natural Science Center, so we were able to benefit from that. We have also worked a little bit with the Southeastern Pine Barrens Association, looking at our grounds and trying to keep them sound ecologically, but also teaching our students about the unique environment that we're in. So building on that, we decided we weren't going to focus solely on our grounds and our outdoor education, but focusing on those community partnerships that made that possible and trying to expand that into other areas. I also did want to highlight one other community partnership that we maintain and are very pleased with is our partnership with South Bay Community Services. So our final goal is just about seeking and all those community partnerships, family partnerships for volunteering and enhancing the opportunities that we're able to provide for our students. And once again, thank you for having us. Thank you to our school council and our school community for supporting us. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Morgan?
Good presentation. I like it was short and concise, and I like the fact that you had last school plan's goals next to the new goals, and it was easy to read and, you know, so I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Very good.
And I was going to say the same thing. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks again. See you next year.
Thank you.
Now, we have an update from our program director for our food services, Dr. Miestis.
Yes, today we have Patrick Van Cott, and I think he's probably still, he probably drove over from South Plymouth. And we have Patty Callahan, who's Assistant Food Service Director, here to provide information regarding our, our food service program in Plymouth. I think I was reviewing the presentation this morning, and it's alarming the amount of meals we serve in a year. When you serve it one day at a time or one meal at a time, when you look at it holistically, I think it's, it's pretty significant. So with that said, Mr. Begley, I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Cott.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for having us this evening. I'm Patrick Van Cott, Food Service Director, and this is Patty Callahan, Assistant Food Service Director. Whenever I stutter, can't finish a sentence, Patty's there to finish it for me, so. We, on our update, we have 12 schools still. We feed 7,501-plus students breakfast and lunch in our meal periods. Our free and reduced lunch percentage is at 32.68, and it's fluctuating daily. We get approximately six, seven, or eight applications with multiple members on each application every day. That's, we serve in the area of 653,000 lunches and 180,000 breakfasts per year. We currently have 68 total employees, one secretary, bookkeeper, two van drivers, four managers, eight team leaders, 51 cafeteria workers, and ourselves. And I have to say thank you very much to the, the time and effort and dedication that all our workers do have. Every time I go into a school, they're doing something different, they're doing something creative, and they all do work very, very hard, and they, they know all the kids by their first names. It's, it's amazing to sit and watch the dedication that they do have. We're not just a simplistic breakfast and lunch food service. We do a lot of different programs. One is, especially here at PCIS, we never really close down. They make it, we make it very difficult to get a good cleaning during the summer months because we have a summer food service that serves meals out of here. And we serve lunch to four different sites. That's 18,192 meals this past summer, and that's up from 13,000 last year. And what we did was, we didn't just serve lunch, we started serving breakfast snack periods. We said, well, we're there anyways, let's start doing them, and there was a big need for that at the different locations. One of the locations is Camp Clark Boys and Girls Club here at PCIS, and Hedge Elementary School is an open site. School is an open site where anyone can show up and get a free meal during the summer months. We also completed our first full year under contract with Council on Aging, doing five days a week, year-round, the congregate meal, and that's averaging about 40, 45 meals per day. We also do the Alternative Learning Program at North High School, Pilgrim Academy. We do all the food service at Memorial Hall. We're constantly catering all different events all over the place, and we do PEC, the Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Our lunch choices are continually moving and grooving with the times, so we at least try-
Moving and grooving.
Trying anyways, to stay current. In our elementary schools, we have hot meal, assorted sandwiches and soups. Secondary schools were a lot more diverse. We have the bistro salad sandwiches, pre-made and to-go. Our most popular is the grab-and-gos because the kids don't have to wait in line to have them all made for them. And then we do the World's Fair, which is like the menu that you see in the newspaper for the hot meal of the day. And then the grill, where we get to experiment with different items, burgers, chicken sandwiches, hot dogs. We do meatloaf or pulled pork and things like that, a lot of home-cooked meals. New this year, we brokered a contract with Papa Gino's, and it was amazing to see the millions of dollars that they spent in marketing, and we get to use that from just the popularity brand and how many more meals that we did, we are serving currently to the kids. It's died down a little bit with the secondary levels because they always want change, but the elementary school kids really, really love it. New this year as well, we're in the process right now of working with Plymouth North High School, DECA Project, and I told them I was going to say their names here. Taylor Shaughnessy and Jocelyn Bailey came up with an idea to do an allergy-free offerings line, and they want it to be district-wide as well, at least on the secondary levels. And they came up with a really cute logo, and it's beehive-free, so a little bee in there. And they've done a lot of research, and we're going to do a lot of taste testing, and they've just sent it to us this morning. I didn't even get a chance to really peruse it, but they were very, very intricate in all the items that they have picked out, so I'm going to have to do some real buying this week to get them some good items to taste. And we're also doing a tomato sauce project that we'll report on in the future, but it has to do with the gardens to school, and we're going to make enough sauce to feed the kids for a long time with homegrown stuff here. I don't want to spoil the whole surprise on that because it'll probably be a presentation of the future. This past year, we had, we got lucky and drew a short straw, and we had our child nutrition program review, and it was split into two different items. One was via through the nutrition bill, it's, we're on a three-year cycle for the reviews. In the administrative view, they sent five days, they sent three people. I uploaded 25 documents and over 200 pages of worksheets and policies for them to look at before they even walked onsite, and we did very, very well in that part of it. The Resource Management Comprehensive Review is three days onsite, and they're looking at all the financials. And in their corrective action plan for us, they found out that our, we were charging too little for the students, and what it is, it's paid lunch equity, where you have to do a weighted average in your free meals, your reduced meals, and they weigh it out, and it has to come close to what you're getting charged for a free meal or reimbursement, which is $3.22. So we have to go up in price this next year. It's a mandate for us. They said that our revenues on the non-programmed foods were very, very diverse and working well. Our labor percentage and our insurance was very, very high. Our student trends, so it's not all doom and gloom, are starting to come back up again. We mentioned last year and the year prior, too, that we were kind of on a roller coaster, and we were, kept waiting for that part that you hit bottom, and it seemed like last year was the year, fiscal '15 and '16. So at '16, we were serving about 3,400 meals, 3,492 per day, and this year, to date this past month, we just served 3,628 meals, too. So things are back on a rise again, be it that the kids are, you know, liking what we're serving, number one, or they're getting used to the regulations, I think is more like it.
Does that include breakfast, that number?
No, that does not. That's down at the bottom here, that we do report on that. Our à la carte sales are back up, too, because we, they have a lot more A-list items that are available. They actually have ice cream that's available now, it's on the, yes, it's this big, but it's at least something. It's still ice cream. Technically, I believe. I haven't read the package closely. The breakfast participation, as Dr. Sorenson was saying, has gone up 100 meals per day, plus we are currently serving over 1,000 breakfasts per day, which is remarkable. A lot of the kids will use this as their, sometimes their meal period. They'll eat breakfast, and they'll be fine throughout the day, and then they'll eat like an early, or a late lunch when they get home, something along the lines. But remarkable that it's gone up about 100, 150 every single year, and it's become such a popular mealtime.
Can I just ask a question on that? Just to clarify. So I've heard comments on the community about the school departments now offering breakfast to kids.
Right.
The kids pay for that, it's a mandate, and it seems to be a benefit, not only to us as an educational institution, that we know kids are getting something to eat, but it's also the parents have some level of comfort that they can get something to eat at school, correct?
Absolutely. A lot of the, and I hear this every time I talk to any one of the nursing departments, that a lot of the visits that they have there, they're referring them back to us to give them breakfast. A lot of it is, my stomach is killing me, it hurts me, and you're hungry. And that's the bottom line. And once you feed the children, then they're more alert, they're happier, the whole bit, and they stop with the excuses, et cetera, and get back to class and start learning again. But it was, when I came here, I think we served breakfast at one school, if I'm not mistaken, Hedge. And the need was there or not explored to be there, Cold Spring as well, that's correct. And we immediately started at all the schools, and it started really, really slow, but it started, you know, gaining some ground in our break-even point for labor, and serving the breakfast was like about 40 per school. And now some of the elementary schools, it's absolutely amazing to walk into and you see it's how they start their day. It's something popular and good that these kids do. Some of them all sit in their little groups of friends and things like that, so it's really neat to see how they do it. But yes, it's becoming, it is a necessary thing. We're, a lot of the schools are schools of need because a certain percentage of your free and reduced lunch, but it's a very, very important part of the day as well.
A free student eats a free breakfast also.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that, too.
Thank you.
Expenses. Food has risen a little bit to about 1.1 million. Healthy ingredients cost more, that's just the bottom line, we have embraced that. Labor has gone up a little bit to 1.13 million with the yearly cost of living increases. And the big, one of the big things that was pointed out to us in our financial review was our health insurance. And, you know, the elephant in the room, it just sits out there, and we're fortunate enough right now, especially this year, to have the resurgence of the popularity of lunch again because we're coming very, very close to breaking even so far this year, knock on wood, you know, barring any disasters. But, you know, fiscal year '16 was just $358,000, '17 is going to be $385,000, and then '18 is going to be $412,000. We need to sell 149,818 meals at $2.75 just to pay for the health insurance alone. That doesn't count food costs, labor, anything else included in there. That's equivalent to 41 operating days. So the first two months of operation that we have in September and October are all to pay for the health insurance, basically. It's a daunting task to stare at that every single year, so we look at it in small increments monthly is how we do it. More expenses. Our other expenses total approximately $150,000, and it's fuel, meals, tax, uniforms, vehicle repairs, software for our POS system, license renewals, equipment repairs, equipment replacement, office supplies and printing costs. We had complete freezer compression failure over at South Middle School this year. We had to replace. The boiler at South High School went, but we don't care because the school is going to be torn down, so. It made it a lot further than I thought it was going to make. I kept looking at it and then closing the door on it.
I would close it, too.
Yeah.
The door shut.
So it's shut down. But thank you to Culinary is allowing us to use one of their kettles to help us out when we need to make our mass quantities of food that we do. And also, South Middle School is helping out, too, as well. They've got a lot of equipment over there. Then office supplies and printing costs. Along with aging buildings comes aging equipment, so it's just a thing that we've come to accept, and I budget for it every single year. And I hope I was under five minutes.
That was very good. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Morgan?
Could I have a report? I know last year, you came before us, and I believe we implemented a policy for restriction of peanut butter, so I'm wondering how that's went over and how that's going?
It's funny, whenever you introduce something shocking as that, you know, peanut butter, what am I going to do? That's all it is.
They weren't happy at first.
At first, they're not happy.
They were not happy.
We replaced some of the schools with sun butter, and they're fine with it. They're as fine as fine can be. And I always don't talk about it, and then it'll just go away, I guess. But no one has really put up any alarms or anything that-
And they can have it at the secondary schools, correct? You just have peanut-free zones.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Dr. Sorenson?
I'm going to go through everybody to Dr. Maestas, because I think it's important to point out, and maybe you can comment on it, that this program is not a budget item. The taxpayers have no participation in this part of the program. Could you elaborate, please?
Dr. Sorenson, I was just thinking that when Patrick was presenting, that I'm not sure how many people in the community take note that when we present our budget, food services in attendance, because their budget is actually self-generated. So this program is 100% dependent on food sales. So they have to be very creative in the menu, they have to be very creative in what they have à la carte items, they have to be very creative in labor costs, because Patrick and Patty manage the entire department, so they can make money to pay the bills. So when Patrick says that they're running in the black or running in the red, they are really running in the red or black, depending on how they, how well they do within the food service program. So it is a model. There aren't very many food service programs in the Commonwealth or even around the country that are running independent and cover all their expenses. That's including healthcare. Some municipalities, the majority of them that run their own food service, the revenues to pay their bills and insurance, insurance is typically pitched in by the community. A municipality might kick in for healthcare costs. In Plymouth, their program is running 100% healthcare and all labor costs and food costs, 100% by what they bring in every day with fees, with lunch prices, and any subsidies we get for food that we get from government allocations and so on.
Very good. It's important to point out. Yes, Ms. Hunt?
I know, I know we've talked about this before, and I've asked before, but what about, or maybe you're doing more now than you were in the past after school for the high schools? Like a grab-and-go type of thing, or?
We haven't explored, well, we have explored it.
The athletes, mostly.
Unfortunately, it's a, a cost is always associated with the labor.
Yeah.
And it becomes very, very unique with, the majority of our labor force is at 3.5 hours. And once we cross the threshold into the four-hour mark, then they're a full-time employee, and we'd have to offer them health insurance. And it always gets, you know, we, you know, looking at the health insurance increments of the increase right now, it's just devastating to look at it, and that's what it would have. And, you know, perhaps, you know, to have a part-time person, you know, do that after school, but we, you have to also understand, too, that we do all our own subs and everything, too. And right now, there's a severe shortage of finding people, good, reliable people, and it's, because it's such a unique, you know, hey, do you want to serve some kids' food, you know? And that becomes very difficult to find someone that's reliable to come in, so.
Just another follow-up to that. Because I know at South, the kids have no place to go, but at North, you see them every day walking to Mary Lou's or walking to Dunkin' Donuts or even down to the Corner Store. What if it was a prepackaged item that you could possibly even get, like Booster Club volunteers, if it's for, if it's geared towards more athletes? Like what if the parents were to volunteer? I mean, I know that there's rules and regulations, you know, for the health department, but if it was a prepackaged, here's some, you know, give me some money, and here's a sandwich or here's a muffin or whatever, it's just something to tie them over. These kids are there from 7:00 in the morning.
Long hours.
Sometimes, I mean, sometimes when my daughter has a late cheer practice, she doesn't get home until after 8:00 at night.
So you caught my attention because you said free labor, right?
Well, you know, I'm sure, to be honest with you, to be honest with you, at the high school level, there is a core group of volunteers in this town, and when they hit high school, there's nothing for them to do. And I know that parents do look for volunteer opportunities at that level, and it's not always as easy of a thing for them to do at this level because of the kids or whatever. I don't know, I mean, even if you just tried it for a little while, I have heard from a lot of parents that they wish that there was something available to the kids after school.
We'll try anything. Remember talking about the construction workers last year? We tried to serve them.
Oh, yeah.
And they wouldn't come down because it was so hot, so they just stayed place, and they would, they go, maybe we'll get something tomorrow. They'd be yelling down from the building. But we tried it.
Yeah.
We did a two-week trial period, so we'll try anything.
Yeah. I mean, rather than seeing them all, I mean, you see them all walking down the street.
You see revenue sources. I always talk about pockets of kids and pockets of people, and we'll go after them. Thank you, that's great.
Just an idea.
All ideas are good.
The Booster Club would be happy to at least brainstorm it with you.
Yeah. Oh, so you hear that, Patty?
Patty, you have a good relationship with them. Thank you.
I actually want to go back to the previous point that we were talking about. You know, we have to present our budget, as we know, to the Finance Committee, into the Board of Selectmen, into town meeting, and we often reference the solar panels as a way that we have taken steps to save the town money. You can see where I'm going with this, but because this is not a budget item, Finance Committee sits over there during our presentation, and I don't think they have any, they don't realize that this whole program runs without taxpayer participation. All I'm saying is it's an item that we need to weave into our presentations in the future to make the point that we're not always asking for everything.
So with that said, Dr. Sorenson, I think Patty and Patrick-
I know where this is going.
-will be included in our budget presentation next year.
I just got out of it, didn't I?
You did.
See, we want to ride your coattails. Okay, okay.
At least we don't put you last anymore.
Oh, we'll see, okay. That's a deal, then.
We'll move you up.
Yes.
I also wanted to mention, too, I totally forgot, that it's a brand-new program that just came out last week, believe it or not, it's called a sharing table. And it's, you know, you have the rules and regulations that you have to walk through the point-of-sale with the specific components, but if you have something that's prepackaged or that is-
Piece of fruit.
Piece of fruit or something that is already packaged and safe, you can take that item, even a milk if you wanted to, and put it on a table, a sharing table in the particular school, and then other children can come if they're still hungry and use that.
Good idea.
The items.
I like that idea.
So it's got to be approved through the Board of Health, and I just, I'm going to write them a letter, and that's how you get approved.
And we do it at Camp Clark in the summertime.
How does it go over?
Great.
Fantastic.
Is that a change that the state would allow you to do? Because I know before, they wouldn't even let us-
Just read like last week, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
They would not even let us take a fruit and, that's-
They're really loosening up, I'll tell you.
That's a movement.
It really is.
Maybe they're hearing that the trash cans are getting full.
Very heavy, yes, exactly.
That's good. One question I had for you is on the meals tax. I'm surprised, can you just explain that, how that's applicable to municipal sites?
The meals tax is the percentage of money of any adult meal that gets paid. We pay the meals tax on that, and we do a check through the town, and we pay directly We pay the meals tax on that and we do a check through the town and we pay directly to the state.
And it's not for the...
For all adult meals that are bought, like teacher meals.
Adult meals, so it's the teacher.
You see adults, right?
Interesting though that it's taxing ourselves on that one. Thank you. As always, a very good presentation. Now, you don't go anywhere because you're the next item to...
That's right.
And the next item is about the school lunch program prices.
Would you like me to elaborate on it?
Yeah.
The mandate, it's called a paid lunch equity and as a result of our corrective action plan from the state, what they did is on the cycle reviews, they started, or this was the second year of their reviews and we were at the end of that cycle. So they had done probably 200 out of the 300 schools in Massachusetts. And what they were finding is a lot of programs, including ourselves, were funding, a large portion of the funding was coming from the free and reduced reimbursement. Our district is approximately $1.1 million out of our $2.8 million budget. So the paid part of that was not keeping up with the near $3.22 of the free part of that meal. And what they recommended is that we go up, you have to go up in increments or you can just jump and go up the quarter, which I would prefer to do, rather than going up in nickels and dimes throughout the, you know, progression of the years. And that will take care of us for three years at least. So I'd like to recommend that we go up from $2.75 to $3.00 on the secondary levels and $2.50 up to $2.75 on the elementary school level.
Ms. Badger?
I know you explained to us on Saturday a little bit about area costs. Can you elaborate for those who might be watching about like, this isn't that much. You know, we're not the most expensive school lunch that you can have.
Not by a stretch. What it does is they're trying to make everybody equal on an equal playing field and a lot of different communities charge a lot more for the meals in more fluids. And then other communities like in Boston, Worcester, et cetera, have a very, very high percentage and they rely typically on 85% of their costs are reimbursements. And it's important that they find some sort of an equity between all the different, and all the surrounding towns are being mandated as well as they get to them and start saying, no, you need to come up to this amount, you need to come up to this amount. And that amount is what I recommended. So we are within reason of everybody else all around us, all the surrounding communities.
Dr. Sorenson?
In my business, we, for our patients, we get money from Medicare. And Medicare has very, very clear structured rules that if we don't, if we don't follow those rules exactly as Medicare wants us to follow them, we can lose Medicare payments for our patients. So does that apply here from free and reduced lunch, if we don't follow what they're saying?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Absolutely.
When was the last time that we had an increase?
Three years ago.
Exactly three years ago, yeah.
So if we don't, if we don't do this increase, those funds are at risk.
Absolutely.
I'll move the recommendation of administration that we increase our prices as cited up there on the board.
And do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? Then please vote on the electronic school board. If to sink?
I'm not there. I'm sorry, I was busy.
Okay.
You were listening. You're going to have to mark me as a yes, please.
So then we're unanimous on this one.
Got it, Ms.?
Must be this seat. When you sit in this seat here.
That's the chick.
She didn't want to swap with you next week. Okay, and?
Continue to try.
Then continue to try.
I'm going to move forward.
I have to log back in, that's...
Okay. There we go.
We'll move them forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Did the Patriots play last night?
No, I keep hearing them.
Go catch up on news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Now we have the new school year calendar for 2017, 2018.
Oh, gosh. Already next year.
Who would like to take that?
Dr. Campbell will run through it.
Dr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Begley. Tonight, we have proposed calendar for the 2017, 2018 school year. It's hard to believe. We've looked at this over the last number of weeks at central office and with our principals, coordinators and directors and have some proposed dates for you this evening for your consideration. We're proposing to start grades one to 12 on August, Wednesday, August 30th, and preschool and kindergarten students start on the following day on the 31st. We then are proposing to have that four-day weekend, which we've done the last number of years here in Plymouth, having the Labor Day weekend begin on that Friday and having, obviously having September 4th, which would be Labor Day off, giving the parents and everyone the four-day weekend. That's been, anecdotally, we've had some, a lot of support for that. First, Professional Development In-Service Day would be Wednesday, September 20th, proposing a half-day for that. As you know, we have a full-day Professional Development Day in the contract now. This past year, it was on the National Election Day. We do not have one of those this coming school year. But we've thought about that long and hard and really wanted to try to tie that day with an existing long weekend to make it what we feel will be less of a burden for families. So if they already have them, if they already know that they're having a long weekend, why don't we tie it to an existing weekend, rather than have another random day at another point in the year? So we're proposing to have the full-day Professional Development Day, which would be a non-school day, on Friday, October 6th. Columbus Day is the 9th. So just to point out some days, you can see the half-day Professional Development Day on Wednesday, October 18th. We also have one on November 15th. There is no school Friday, November 10th, as it would be Veterans Day observed.
Thank you.
We're also proposing Thanksgiving recess and holiday on November 22nd, 23rd and 24th. We have had school in the past for a half-day on that Wednesday, but we find that that becomes a very well-traveled day, let's put it that way, for families. So it is probably the largest travel day of the year, in fact, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So rather than have an abbreviated school day, we propose, we're proposing to have the day off and just extend the year out in another day and make that day up in another day. So it would be essentially have a three-day holiday there for Thanksgiving. In December, we have parent conferences, K to eight, which is contractual, both Wednesday the 6th and 13th, having the holiday recess begin a half-day Friday, December 22nd, students returning on the 2nd after having Monday, January 1st off. Martin Luther King Day is the 15th. Our January In-Service Day would be Wednesday, the 24th. And then as we reach February, it would be Wednesday, the 14th. Within our February recess break, winter recess break, would be Monday, the 19th through Friday, the 23rd. March, Wednesday, March 7th, our Professional Development Release Day for all grades. The parent conferences, again, K to eight in March on Wednesday, the 21st. And Good Friday would be recognized, no school Friday, the 30th of March, so early this year, next year. In April, the Professional Development Day would be Wednesday, April 11th, with the spring recess beginning on April 16th and concluding on the 20th. May is a relatively light month in terms of days recognized. We have a release day proposed for Professional Development on Wednesday, the 16th, and Memorial Day on the 28th. Graduation happens to fall on the same date. It'd be Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, which is the same, I believe, as this year, June 2nd. And the last day, with all this taken into consideration, pending any snow days, of course, would be Thursday, June 14th.
Very good. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Historically, if you go back to the 70s and 80s and early 90s, the day before Thanksgiving
was a day off. And then somewhere in the middle of 1990s, the school committee with the recommendation of the administration made it a half-day.
Okay.
And so now you're recommending that we go back to the day off, which I don't have a problem with. But the reason you're giving it, giving us is because, this is almost like, because students don't come because they travel, therefore we'll give them, we'll make it a day off? Is that what you're saying? And I'm thinking they're traveling because they say, oh, it's just a half-day, we can miss a half-day. If it were a whole day, I wonder if we would have such an attendance problem.
Still goes, that was a day.
That's an interesting question. I get notices when we are over 10% over in attendance. And pretty much every school on that day is at that threshold, so it's hard to say if they would stay. I mean, if they're traveling to...
I certainly would take your recommendation, but it seems to me that, so now what happens if they decide Tuesday they want to travel? Going to make that a half-day? When does this stop?
When I taught, I taught high school and I, the school that I taught at had a full day. And I remember I would drive to Virginia every, for 13 years in a row, I drove to Virginia, that's our closest family. And I would, one year to Stafford County, Virginia, it took me 16 hours. It's normally an eight-hour drive, but that day to drive, the later you go, and I think parents, they judge that, if you're driving for family, it's a tough, it's a tough day. But hey, that's...
It's a good thing about living in Plymouth.
That's a good point.
You have them come to you.
Yeah. That's right.
What are the other school districts around us doing?
A lot of the school districts around us are, take the day off. Yeah.
I'm not crazy about it, but I'll certainly go along with everybody's thinking.
Any comments or anything?
I think that being somebody who travels to the western part of the state with Thanksgiving, we usually leave after the kids get out of school on that Wednesday and it's logistics-wise, it's disaster. So for us to be able to be out there on a Tuesday night would be better personally. But I do see, you know, some parents send their kids to school for the half-day and if not, they have to travel, they just have to miss school. So it may alleviate some of that burden. As Dr. Campbell said, it's one of the heaviest travel volume days out of the season, so, statistically, so I think it may make sense to alleviate the burden on some families to have the day.
Just as sort of a, maybe a tongue-in-cheek, is there all these moms and dads who are preparing Thanksgiving dinner all day on Wednesday are going to have all the kids home?
These parents might not want the kids home in the morning.
I am less cooked for myself.
Sorry.
I'm taking you to school.
I apologize.
Go play at school.
Good news, bad news.
Go to the playground at school, I need some time.
Come outside.
This is an action item, so do I have a motion?
Yep.
I moved that we approve the calendar for 2017, 2018 school year.
Ms. Badger moved it. Ms. Trisselli seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Back to electronic school board. It is so much easier to just ask it about.
Can we back up to the previous vote if you want me to vote or is that impossible?
We already were and moving on. I mean, I can go and revote it if you, what do you think?
No, it's all right, it's not that important.
Just note it.
Yeah, okay.
One manual, the rest...
Moving forward, we'll be all set.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
And that brings us to out-of-town or overnight field trip item. Dr. Myes?
Yes, tonight, we have an out-of-country field trip. And this is, this is the third year, I believe, that this is the trip, if you want to come on down, you can come on down. So Tara's here tonight, Mike Bastoni is here as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. I promise I won't cry this time like last time. All right, so this is our third year. As Dr. Myes has just mentioned, we had a fabulous turnout last year with 20 students visiting El Castillo in Dominican Republic and earning 20 hours of community service, having extraordinary bonds made with community members there. Mike and I are escorting 17 students in April to the same location, which we are extremely excited about. And I was actually really thinking that I might take a break next year, but I have had several students ask about the trip. So I decided to get an early jump on it and say, okay, if there's an interest, then I should probably move forward for next year and continue this extraordinary relationship that we've started down there. So we are here, nothing's really changed. The price is, I think, $50 more, but relatively the same, $28.50. Same location, same community service, same 20 hours of community service. So I don't really have anything to add because I think last time I spilled my guts on the table. So if you have questions, we're happy to answer them, but we're looking forward to this year and hopefully next year as well.
Any questions? Comments? Very good. Then it's an action item. Ms. Badger?
I moved that we approve the field trip to Dominican Republic in April, 2018.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Ms. Trisselli seconds it. Any further question, discussion? Then please vote, electronic school board. Very good.
We're going to have some background music while it's thinking.
I know, right?
The Jeopardy!
Definitely need that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to wait so long for that. We should have put you at first, sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's fine. It was kind of interesting to see everything else, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
And that brings us to funding activities. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the fundraisers in the report we have? Okay, seeing none. Then we have reports and proposals from committee members and I know we have...
Go ahead.
No, go right ahead, Mr. Morgan.
First, because mine's going to be long.
Okay, mine will be short. Last week, I attended two shows at North High School for PCIS, Lion King Jr., and they did such an excellent job. The level of professionalism and talent and the costumes and everything is amazing. I went last year to Shrek Jr. This year, I had a hyena in the show with the family, so I went to both shows and said yes, one. But they do such an excellent job and they do be commended with the effort and the, in the show, they, both nights sold out, so it was excellent.
Very good. Very good. And Ms. Hunt, I know you want to give us a shout out of your attending the conference.
Yep. So I have two things. One, one quick thing I wanted to mention today, and I think the last time I was here, I reported out on the activities of the Distinguished Visitors Committee and our trip to Japan that we're working on. I don't know if we have any updates as far as when the committee's meeting, but I did want to mention, and I forgot to mention it last time, that the DVC did vote on a policy, a part of the procedure. We're trying to streamline this process so that every time a new person comes in and gets involved, we're not starting from square one. We're trying to make sure that we, you know, have almost like a procedure manual with interviews and all that. And one thing that's come up several years in a row now is whether or not people that aren't part of the official delegation can actually attend and travel with the group, even if they are paying their own way. And the Distinguished Visitors actually made a policy, and I thought I had the exact wording with me, but, and it's, they voted to not allow that. While anyone can go to Shishkahama and anyone can contact them and travel on their own, if it's an official trip, we've, we feel strongly that if people come on their own with the group, it puts an unfair burden on our hosts, as well as some conflict back home as far as, you know, who's in charge, who's in the delegation. They expect, and when they come here, they have a certain hierarchy and, you know, we kind of roll out the red carpet for them and they do the same thing for us. And if people are coming that aren't prepped and part of the delegation and, you know, know what we want to talk about when we're there... know what we want to talk about when we're there, then it just disrupts things. So even if they pay for their own way, they can go, but they can't be an active participate in the, participant in the activities, the housing situation, and the group tours. So I just wanted to mention that. And then I wanted to report out on, so this week, last week, I got to attend the Advocacy Institute for the National School Boards Association, and I thank you very much for allowing me to attend that. I, I really feel like I got an immense, such a great amount of knowledge, and I really feel like it was a productive trip. I was the only Massachusetts school board member there that wasn't part of the state board. So that's good and bad. The good thing is the state board actually kind of took me under their wing, and I got to go on Hill visits with them, I got to spend time with them and have meals with them. So it was really nice. So I, you know, I made some friends really quickly. There were two activities while I was gone. I was gone for four days. The first day, it was actually an equity symposium. It was a whole separate event, different attendees. It was all about how to make schools equitable. It talked a lot about poverty, and I have some materials that I can share with everybody, and I'm gonna send everybody links to the PowerPoints. It was just really, it was really good. It was really good to hear from what other states, other communities, even talking with school committee members from our state. We were pretty much spread out all over the place. There were several from Western Mass, several from the Boston area, Cape Cod, just hearing everybody's take on, you know, what kind of pockets of poverty we have, what are school districts doing to recognize that, to try to make it more equitable, given everything that's going on in Washington right now. It was just a really interesting conversation. So that was the first day. The second day, it was the actual Advocacy Institute. So we basically spent two days hearing from, we heard probably from about a total of maybe six senators while we were there, from both sides of the aisle. Again, very interesting conversations. We heard a lot about the education, the nomination for the Secretary of Education, both sides. You know, we are with people from other states, so here, just hearing different opinions were, were really interesting. We had a keynote speaker who wrote, who, Doris Kearns...
Goodwin.
Goodwin. And she writes a lot of historical books about presidents, and she was great. We got a chance to hear her speak. And then the last day, we actually went to Capitol Hill. We heard from a few more senators while we were there. We had like a reception in the afternoon. But I actually partnered with a school board, he's actually the national, Massachusetts School Board President, and he is from the Cape. So we went to Congressman Keating's office together, talked a lot about Plymouth, talked a lot about the good stuff that we're doing here. And then we also met with Representative Lynch's office. So it was just very productive. I gave you all, I, I don't know if I had enough for everybody. I have the National School Boards Association Policy Agenda, which, just to give you really quick, this is what they kind of prep us for and have us go in when we do meet with our, have our meetings. They kind of give us what to talk about. And there's a couple of things. One is the child, Pat's gone, the Child Nutrition Act, that's in reauthorization right now. So they're working on that. One that I thought was really interesting to us, and it gave me an opportunity when we met with Congressman Keating, is the CTE, the Carl Perkins Act. That seems to be in kind of a danger of having some funding cut, it's in reauthorization. It has a lot to do with college and career readiness and our technical programs. Another one is federal education investments appropriations. And then the biggest topic of the, of the weekend was school choice and charter schools and school vouchers, and hearing the different opinions on that. And then Massachusetts kind of has its own agenda that they go in and talk to, and I gave you guys a copy of that as well. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I gave you the bird's-eye view of it. We pretty much worked from morning till night. I, I actually jumped in a little protest while I was there, too. So that was kind of fun. We actually, Lamar Alexander was one of our speakers, and the school teacher, the Teachers' Union was out front of our hotel, objecting to the nominee for the Secretary of Education. So that's pretty much it. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but...
Oh, this is great. This sounds like, you know, this is, was a conference that I'm glad...
Yeah, it was definitely worth. I compare it to what I've done for other things, and I just, I think maybe I'm crazy that I really like this advocacy stuff, but to me, it just seemed like everything that I did, you know, was worthwhile, and it was, you know, wheels to the ground, it was working, it was talking, seeing results.
And you're building networks.
And I recommend, I mean, next year, I won't be eligible to go, but if somebody can go next year, I highly recommend it. They've been doing the Advocacy Institute for several years. This is only the second year of the Equity Symposium, but that was equally as good.
And it's interesting, since you were the only non-mask member that attended, it seems like it's, so it doesn't, it's not on the radar of other school committees either?
Yeah, yeah. There were a lot, I'm trying, there were probably about 500 people there in total, which was nice, because you could have more conversations than when you go to something that has like 4,000 people.
Right.
But it was, it was definitely, I recommend, you know, I hope somebody's...
Most of them wait for the national one, the big one.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, the national one's good, too. I personally felt like I got more out of this one.
Yeah.
And I, I hope somebody can go next year.
Good. Very good. And you're gonna send us the links and everything?
Yep, I have links, and I actually, I have with me, this is the, this is all about the Equity Symposium, so you guys can take this if you want. I've read through them. Here's a copy of our advocacy agenda. And I have all the PowerPoints for, they have an app now, so even if you don't go to the workshop, you get a PowerPoint about it. And just to give you a quick rundown, I went to one workshop that was on LGBTQ youth and how school committees are dealing with it. There's a, a case in the Supreme Court right now that affects us. I went to a couple of budget, and that was just scary. Couple of budget workshops. One of the workshops I went to was on just all of our policy items. Trying to think of what else. I, I, it was non-stop.
Very good.
Yeah, so it's good.
Very good. Thank you for going for us.
Thank you for letting me.
And do we have any other reports? Alumni updates or anything like that?
We don't have another meeting tomorrow.
Another one till March. We have the St. Valentine's Day Gala to go to for education, the Education Foundation. We have our table.
Yay. I bought my dress.
It'll be good. Be good.
Sold out.
It's, and it's sold out. Good.
Pushed them over the top today.
Is the whole thing sold out?
Yeah.
Wow.
Perfect.
It's a heavy ticket.
PYDC, Mrs. Burgess isn't here, but Dr. Maest...
Yeah, we, we did talk about the content of what's in the minutes provided to you in our previous meeting. This is just, formalizes the events of that day. But you can see, it's a very active group, and we've made a lot of progress.
Yeah, the next meeting is this Friday.
This Friday.
Yes.
Reports from the building committee?
No meeting.
No meeting. Wow. We're moving along here. Mrs. Frye, any appointments, leaves of absence, resignations?
Yes, we have eight coach and advisor appointments. We have two classified appointments, one short-term maternity leave, and one resignation.
Good, thank you. And now the homeschooling plan approval?
Yes, Mr. Begley, I have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it does meet the recommendations that's set forth by school committee and by Dr. Halpin's office, and I recommend approval.
You have a motion?
Sure, move the recommendation of administration.
Dr. Sorensen moves it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor, please turn to your electronic school board. Very good.
I found that.
And now we have the accounts payable warrant. Ms. Badger?
Sorry, I'm being... Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S020917 dated February 9th, 2017, in the amount of $1,208,951.78, as presented.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote on electronic school board.
That's a good save.
Cut myself off. Very good. Thank you. Unanimous. Now we have the disposal of equipment and materials.
Yes, tonight, we have a number of books from the Votek, Votek School. These are, these are books that are no longer used, they're obsolete, and these will be donated to an organization that will take these class sets.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we dispose of these books.
And do I have a second? Mrs. Trisselli seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote. Well, it's kind of a silly expression, all those in favor, please vote. Could vote either way.
You're not in favor.
I'll get the rhythm down yet on this thing.
It's okay.
And we have one more now.
Yes, tonight, we have one more disposable, disposal of books and instructional materials request, and this is for Plymouth South High School. These are outdated textbooks, and these were approved for disposal on December, 2016. They come to you tonight, and they will be donated to Big Hearted Books, which is another organization that does take, that does take books that we're looking at discarding. They recycle them and put them in different locations, but it's a long list of books.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So move the recommendation.
Moved by Dr. Sorensen. I need a second. Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? Then please vote. Very good. Unanimous, that's done. And just want to note that we are way ahead of schedule tonight.
Well, we stayed up late last night, so it's...
We're cranking it. All right. So then, without objection, we are adjourned at 8:23.